All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I call to order our reorganization meeting. Clerk, will you establish a form for us, please?
Elaine, Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knudsen here. Melanie Cole here. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes here. And Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So who?
I'll second Steve.
Let me number two second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda passes. Item number four is to the election of a chairperson for the 2020, excuse me, not 19 anymore. Nominations are now in order for the office of chair. Do I have a nomination for that?
Aye, nominate Matt Lemke.
I'll second that.
So Matt Lemke is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair are closed. Matt Lemke is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair and hereby declare him elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to do so record in the minutes.
I will do that.
Next election is the election of the vice chairperson. Do we have a nomination for that?
I nominate Melanie Cole.
Melanie Cole is nominated. Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chairperson? Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chairperson? Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chairperson? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of chairperson are closed. Melanie Cole is the only candidate nominated for the office of chairperson and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record in the minutes.
Vice chairperson.
Vice chairperson.
Mm-hmm.
Did I say chairperson? No, vice chairperson, yes.
And just know the nominations don't need a second.
Correct. Yeah, they don't, yeah.
Even though it's on the sheet.
Yeah, on there, but they actually don't.
Okay.
That should be ruled, that's been there for a long time. It's time to move that.
Yes, we will remove it. Second, yeah.
That's it.
Okay, nominations are now in order for the office of clerk. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Missy Hermes.
Missy Hermes is nominated. Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? Are there any further nominations for the office of clerk? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of clerk are closed. Missy Hermes is the only candidate nominated for the office of clerk and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record it in the minutes. Okay, nominations are now in order for the office of treasurer.
I nominate Kirby Anderson.
Kirby Anderson is nominated. Are there any other further nominations for the office of treasurer? Are there any further nominations for the office of treasurer? Are there any further nominations for the office of treasurer? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of treasurer are closed. Kirby Anderson is the only candidate nominated for the office of treasurer and I hereby declare him elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to so record it in the minutes. Moving on to item number six, we have a salary for the school board to set our monthly salary. It's proposed that we would increase it by $25 this year from last year. We have not had an increase for a couple of years. We just normally just do it incrementally and not do a big huge change.
Twenty-five dollars a month.
Yeah, twenty-five dollars a month.
Yes.
Twenty-five dollars, what did I say?
You said just twenty-five dollars.
Oh, no, twenty-five dollars extra a month.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
I move that we set the basic salary at forty-seven-five per month. And as noted in the motion that's before us, to additionally include that contract negotiators will be paid a stipend of five hundred dollars payable once during each contract cycle and that beyond the delineated meetings listed in the motion, any meetings outside the basic salary conditions will be paid at a rate of twenty-five dollars per hour.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that?
One second.
Do we have any discussion?
Just to clarify, it's just with the certified staff negotiations, right?
Just the one, not every negotiator, because there's always negotiating committees. Correct, right.
And the other things that were paid for at twenty-five dollars an hour, I mean, that's super rare that you would actually get that twenty-five.
Somewhat.
The four-seventy-five covers basically the normal, all the normal functions of the board, so it's, my misconception when I first got on the board was, holy cow, we're getting, every time we attend a meeting, we get twenty-five dollars an hour and that's not, yeah, so just more kind of for the public's benefits, why explain that?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven is the meeting dates, location, and time. The meeting place will be at the Otter Community Room, Kennedy Secondary School. The meeting dates will be on the second and fourth Monday of the month starting at 5:15. Exception July and November means on the third Monday of the month only, and December's meeting on the second Monday of the month only. Summer meetings will begin at 7:00 a.m. Just for a note, that school board meeting is scheduled for October 12th, 2020, which is Columbus Day. Can I get a motion to set the meeting dates, location, and times as noted above?
So.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I'll just note that it's on the item number nineteen, right? It shows our meeting dates and stuff, so just for our reference. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight is the mileage rate. The mileage rate has been the IRS recognized rate. The new IRS rate is currently set at fifty-seven point five cents per mile effective January 1st, 2020. Can I get a motion to set the mileage rate at the IRS recognized rate?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine is the official newspaper. The Daily Journal has been the official newspaper. Can I get a motion to designate the Daily Journal as the ISD 544 official newspaper?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Good, Natalie. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten is to use the signature scan. We hereby resolve that the present signature scan can be used until a new signature scan is available, which means that since we're not changing anything, we won't need a new signature scan.
Correct. Well, we don't even need to move on this at all.
So we don't have to adopt it?
No, because we do not need a new signature scan.
So we will move on from?
Yep, all we have to change is we're above, do we need that?
Okay, item number eleven is a resolution authorizing the wire transfer. Authorization for the wire transfer for the following business office employees. Finance Director, Plek Stoltman, for sales tax and bond payments. Payroll Manager, Sherry Smith, for payroll taxes, PRA, TRA, and HCSP. Accounts Payable Secretary, Marcy Clausen, for rent and K-12 management. Accounts Receivable Secretary, Kelly Nelson, for retiree payments of insurance. Will somebody offer that? So this is a resolution?
It is a resolution, yes it is.
Okay, so I'll somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
So moved.
We'll go Missy.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Melanie. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
The resolution passes.
Thank you. Item number twelve is to designate a depository. Security State Bank is our official depository, so I think I missed out on that one. Anyway, so do we have a motion to designate Security State Bank as our official depository?
I'd like to make a motion that we designate Security State Bank as our official depository.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have to recuse. Excuse myself.
Recuse, excuse.
Recuse for Missy.
Let's leave that in the minutes. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number thirteen is a resolution authorizing to employ legal counsel. Whereas from time to time matters arise which require consultation with legal counsel, whereas a school board may not have time to meet specifically to hire legal counsel for a particular circumstance that has arisen, and therefore a general authorization to contact legal counsel is necessary. Whereas a school board receives the right to hire any legal counsel of its choice for any particular matter, now therefore be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 544 as follows. The superintendent or school board chairperson be and hereby are authorized to contact legal counsel as needs require. Will somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption as presented?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is acknowledgement of the participation of the district in the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund. Can I have a motion to acknowledge participation in the School District Liquid Asset Fund?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this?
Maybe just an explanation of what it is.
Blake, you want to talk about it? What it is?
MSDLF. It's just another forum. It's almost, how do I explain it in plain as terms?
Like a pool?
Security State Bank, you have, they have to have collateral pledges to do it. MSDLF is a special fund where you wouldn't need certain pledges to collateralize it. It's just like an investment fund, similar, but it's just, it's safer, it's almost more guaranteed.
Sure.
But we don't, we use very, a very small percentage of our funds, the majority, say ninety-plus percent is in security.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifteen, do we have a motion on this or just for? The proposed 2020 committee representatives.
No, that's just so that we just have acknowledgement of where they're assigned to. I think that's fine. I don't, I mean, we can, we have done that before if there's a motion to approve it, it doesn't, however you want to go.
This is on our website, correct?
Yes.
It has been, yes. Yes. So I would just go ahead and, I would just go ahead and get a motion on the representatives in the community, just, yeah, that's our, that has been our practice.
Sure. So do I have a motion to approve the proposed 2020 committee representatives as presented on this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on this or any changes that we need to do amendment to the motion?
Do you still like the curriculum?
Why, would you like to do that?
Just if you wanted to change a pace, I could switch something with you if you want.
It was suggested to me that somebody else should get a chance to be on that committee too.
Who was?
It meets the third Monday.
Right.
Of every month, except October, November.
Okay. So I could trade meet and confer with you or legislative with you if you would like?
I was going to be on the policy committee too, so I will stay on staff development and policy.
Okay, and then I'll pick up.
Okay, so you're going to the policy committee?
Because maybe confer doesn't meet that often.
So Steve, are you going on?
They don't meet and confer often, no.
No, about three times a year.
It's a funny joke.
So pretty, does it beat very often either?
No.
No, policy's.
Policy's way behind. Policy has a stack in my office.
Let's get cracking. Let's go. So am I staying on policy or is it, is it three of us on policy or just two?
You can have up to three people.
At our training, they suggested that the clerk be on the policy committee.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to keep that one, yeah, so.
So we're going to amend the motion to change, amend the motion to change the Curriculum Review Committee person.
You're okay with that? Missy, give me that up, sorry to drop that.
Nope, that's fine. From Missy Hermes to Steve Vigasa, and then we're going to add to the policy committee, Missy Hermes to the list. Do we have, does somebody want to offer that motion?
Oh, the amended motion.
Amended motion, thank you. Do I have a second on the amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the proposed 2020 committee representatives and we do have a motion and a second on that, so is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number sixteen, proposed 2020 negotiation representatives.
Since we're not negotiating this year, it should be pretty good. Pretty good the way it stands.
All the support staff will be negotiating.
Okay.
It'll be a negotiating year for all of them. Teachers and principals done, but.
But everybody's comfortable where they're at? So somebody offer that motion to approve the proposed 2020 negotiation representatives?
I'll offer that motion.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item nineteen is just again the 2020 monthly school board meeting schedule that we adopted earlier for just for our information. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourned our school board reorganization meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
No. Yeah, we're done that.
I call this meeting of Independent School Districts 544 to order. Clerk, can you establish a form for us, please?
Yes. Kirby Anderson?
Present.
Natalie Knudsen?
Here.
Melanie Cole?
Here.
Matthew Lemke?
Here.
Missy Hermes, here. And Stephen Vigasa?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed? Agenda passes. Moving on to acknowledgements. We all have our clerk?
I'd like to offer the following resolution of acknowledgement and move for its adoption. This is a thank you to Jamie Anderson, Heidi Bohannon, Erin Mittelson, Carol Bishop, April Howey, Heidi Booker, Dean and Lavelle Runby, and Michelle Vogel for their donations to the Otter Angel Academy, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. And a thank you to Shoremaster for their donation of steel to the Roosevelt Education Center Metal Shop. A thank you to Chris Jewelsrude and Caleb Brist for their monetary donations to the Cleveland School. And thank you to Evan and Tanya Westra for their donation of a tenor saxophone to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department.
Do I have a second on that resolution?
I'll make a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Item number E is our reports and information, and I will start first. First, the Minnesota High School League did not meet since our last time, so I have nothing to report. Lake County Service Co-op did meet on January 9th, so on Thursday, and on that I have a little sheet for you. This was sent out to the local businesses. The Setting Four that they've been working on, that's the old Army that they converted over to a Setting Four facility is now operating, and this was just a letter sent out to the local businesses just to kind of tell them about it, that, you know, who they are and, you know, if they have any, if they have any concerns or comments or anything like that to give, you know, encourage the comments, so just kind of being good neighbors, just kind of letting people know about it. So that's just for you for your information, just in case you get a question or a call about it or something like that. The other thing, just to talk about during the meeting, there's pretty much a standard meeting, but one thing they did talk about that I thought was kind of interesting is also about the health insurance pool. And Lake County Service has two different pools. They have the school district pool, that's one group, and then they have government and city, and both pools have been doing very well. In fact, in the city government one, the city, local governments and stuff and county that has done extremely well. So it's, it's good to see. And some of the changes that they've done is they've come now into more of a statewide cooperative, so they're pooling everything together now, and so they're going statewide with all the other cooperatives to pool their resources together and funding and stuff like that and hopefully give out rates for Blue Cross Blue Shield and, and so, and it seems to be working, so it's, it's nice to see. And it's some of the proactive things that they've been doing to try to make that work for the members, so it's really good to see. So those are my reports, any questions? Natalie Knudsen, wellness and policy?
Wellness meeting tomorrow, but I do have an update from Lance since he transitioned, transitioned the cafeteria space, so the serving looks a lot different now. Right before Christmas, they served eight hundred and fifty regular school meals, and their first day back on Monday, they had one thousand forty-eight meals served with no à la carte meals purchased, and then the next day they had one thousand sixty-eight with no à la carte purchases. His goal is one thousand one hundred and fifty as things catch on and people are understanding there's a lot of options and a lot of opportunity, and they're getting the kids through so they can actually eat in a timely manner, so good transition. And then policy, like Elaine said, there's a load, I guess, that needs to be gone through, so we'll be meeting soon.
Any comments or questions for Natalie?
Did, has Lance quantified how much more quickly it's going?
Not specifically.
Okay, but, but he thinks it's, he thinks it's an improvement.
By the number of meals served, he kind of, I think that's what he thought.
And I've been down there and they go through it quite fast. Superintendent Drake, didn't he say about seven or eight minutes a kid's had on average?
Extra.
Extra?
Great, wow.
Mine's kind of.
They go very quickly, yeah, it's pretty amazing.
Do you think, I wonder then next year if we'll be able to collapse the, because we've had parents complain about how early our lunch starts and how long it goes, and so I wonder if we'll be able to centralize it more toward the noonish.
And I, you know, considering it's only been, what, two weeks that they've done it, this is, it's pretty amazing. And the staff have really enjoyed it, really appreciated the change also. It's a very nice addition for us to go down and have a salad bar that has really, it's, it's a lot of difference, yeah.
I have two kids, a fifth and an eighth grader, and they both absolutely love it. Especially my fifth grader, who she's got control, you know, loves that.
I was down there a couple of weeks ago, right before Christmas, I went down there and spent half an hour just wandering around, sat at, sat at a couple of tables with some seventh graders and just asked them, what do you think?
So that was before Christmas?
Yeah.
So that was before the change took place?
So now you want to make sure you check it out again?
Okay, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they liked what had happened, what had changed so far even then.
I was amazed at how many plates had salad and different parts, pieces of the salad bar on their plates, it was.
And something he noted was just, yeah, it's way more well-rounded than just grabbing a piece of pizza and a cheeseburger. I mean, now they're having to take the whole tray.
Which is wonderful.
Yeah.
A lot more food. And options.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Natalie. Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region One and Finance and Activities.
Well, Finance and Activities haven't had any recent activity, and Region One meeting in December was just Rose and Hill stuff with the progress on the technology and working on the conference and all that, nothing extraordinary. Personnel was discussed as well. And then the Special Education Cooperative met last week and updated the numbers count for the year, which is done, has to be done by December 1st, and that's a real significant piece, and our special education numbers are down slightly this year across the cooperative, and so that's good. They're adding, but the number of autistic children identified is up, and then we had a short presentation by Sandy Kitzman about her role. Do you recall her title, Superintendent Drake?
It was lengthy.
Yeah, I cannot think of it, but admit, she, so she does some of the screening and administration that goes along with, with the autism program and some of the other specialty things, so, and then we, it was a full board meeting, so then we reviewed what the executive board had done and approved all that, so. Not much out of the ordinary there.
Any other questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, staff development and curriculum review.
Okay, curriculum review meets next Monday, so don't have anything to report in December, but staff development have met and have made a lot of plans for upcoming trainings that we're going to have, so on Janu, first of all, that budget is completely finished for this year, but teachers that are interested in looking at what's ahead for next year can already start planning for that, but coming up on January 17th, we have a in-service day, and what's going to happen is teachers are going to be able to do the cultural competency training that's required by the Department of Education for license renewal. So teachers that are renewing their license in 2020 or 2021 will be able to take this training, which is pretty much all-day training, it's quite intensive. People that don't need that have some other options on different things that they can be doing, and then also on the, let's see, so some of the different things that are coming up that teachers can do, take training on are, one is on suicide awareness, thrive, we're talking about that, literacy strategies, chemical health awareness, there's going to be demonstrations from the tech department, and also then on January 20th, it is also a training day as well for educators, and so we have a variety of, again, of different, different trainings based on your grade level and so on, so there's going to be math and reading webinars for grades three through six educators, and then also there are, is going to be training on ADSS, which I kind of had to look up, I needed to learn about that myself, and so ADSS for teachers of grades three through six, and also math teachers of seven through eight. Now what that stands for is alternative delivery of specialized instructional services, and so those teachers will be learning how to assist students who need academic and behavioral support in order to succeed, so that's what ADSS stands for. In addition to that, there will also be, if you don't, if you're not in those grade levels, three through six, or seven and eight, then there's going to be a presentation on 504 plans, and after that is done, so lots more training, there will be the superintendent, Mr. Drake will be talking about the survey results. Mr. Drake, will be talking about the survey results that teachers, staff, not just teachers, but parents, staff, and so on, their survey that they filled out. So, and then we also have talked about the march in service, so even down the road. And some of the things that are exciting, Diane Heacock will be coming back. She did the follow-up service on differentiated instruction, so, and of course, our teachers are in their PLCs, professional learning communities are working on differentiated instruction, so to have her come back is great. And then also, again, literacy sessions, STEAM presentations, hopefully an Envoy follow-up session. So remember, Envoy was a classroom management program and so. And then also, and I hope, my really hope is, because I'm interested in this too, something on the science standards, which we've talked a lot about. So, yeah, a lot.
Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Well, Steve Biggessa, Legislative Liaison and Meet and Confere.
I actually have a report this time, which is great. Meet and confer is not met or conferred. But the legislative, on the legislative side, MSBA, which is Minnesota School Boards Association, has put out their agenda of what they would like to lobby for this year. There isn't a lot of difference from previous years, but I guess the overarching theme that I, when I'm reading these documents that they put out is that they're, you know, they're kind of going for more equality in, in general for education and fairness. You know, for example, the special ed cross-subsidy, which means the amount of funding that's needed for special ed versus the amount of funding that is actually happening from the federal government, state government, is a pretty huge gap. Last year, they were able to kind of stop the bleeding and make the gap not bigger. But now they want to start chipping away at that. So their goal is to try to find ways to reduce that by five percent. They're also talking about making things more equitable for, um, I guess, to reduce the achievement gap where giving students funding, the kids are so distracting out there, I'm sorry. Giving, um, giving kids ability to have a Chromebook or, or an iPad or something in their hands and getting funding for that. The, the other thing is school safety, making that a little more fair. Last couple of years is kind of a lottery thing and, you know, districts submitted their plans and they, a lot of us didn't get it. And they wanted, they're going to be lobbying for making that kind of across the board to improve the safety in our schools. You know, and small, and things that aren't as big of a deal, but they are quite costly where, you know, not as common, but like if we have a board member have to leave for death or sickness or whatever, being able to just replace that board member instead of holding a special election, which can cost about twenty thousand dollars if it's not in a general, if it's not in a timeframe or it can be in a general type election. And just getting rid of some things that are, that don't make any sense, you know, for, if you're looking at special ed. They're doing, right now, special ed teachers are required to do paperwork that's redundant, like two or three, you know, you have the federal requirement, the state requirement, they, they can't just have, you know, so they're, they're working on reducing that so they can spend more time with the kids. And, oh, let's see, I, you know, the rest is, is pretty minor things, but those are, those are the big things that they're really looking at lobbying for. And they, they get pretty close to what they go for, which is, which is nice. And they're shooting for a one percent increase in general education, but also making that education formula, like last time they went for two percent, but now they're looking at maybe lobbying for things that would make it make sense, like the, like the general education formula being tied a bit to inflation and, you know, looping in some of these other funding sources that are tied to the education formula. So just, it makes more sense to me, I mean, to have everything, all the funding be kind of coming from one place. That's what, that's what we're going for, it hasn't happened yet, but it sounds nice anyways. Other than that, that's, that's all I got for my report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Kirby Anderson, Five Forty Four Education Foundation.
Yes, the Five Forty Four Education Foundation has met twice since our last meeting on December twelfth and again this past Thursday on January ninth. And I think I reported a couple of months ago that for the first time in the history of the foundation, their net assets exceeded one million dollars. And now there are, our net assets are one point one six million dollars because a couple of reasons. First of all, two thousand nineteen was a very good year as far as the investments of the foundation. I think the rate of return was just over seventeen percent. And also, we had a one-time donation that came from the estate of one of our alumni from the class of nineteen sixty. And I think they're going to be doing a press release on that. They're trying to, they're talking to some of the other graduates and trying to find out more about the donor and what her interests were, because right now it's in undesignated funds. And so we want to try and tailor that towards what her interests were and get a little more background on that. So you'll probably see some more on, on that coming up, but that was a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from that estate. So that was very nice. We did send out an alumni email, and we keep track of who opens and who doesn't. It's about a thirty-five percent rate of opening on those emails, which is about average. And then of those thirty-five percent, twenty percent of those went on and went into our website and looked around, so. The candidate's display cases over here will be updated. If they haven't done already, they'll be updated later this month, I believe. We have some new promotional videos that are being worked on, and our high school video production class is actually putting together a couple of those. It's part of one of their assignments, so it'll be interesting to see how those turn out. It should be, should be a good effort. We will be, each month, Mary Dolan is one of our board members at the radio station, and she has a program every day for about four hours, and she hosts, uh, once a month, she'll, she'll host one of our, uh, one of our board members, and they talk about different things depending on what month it is. And so I will be on in May, and so I will be talking about the senior recognition ceremony, about scholarship recipients, and retirees staff reunion, and of course, I'll put a plug in for our, for our graduation ceremonies here as well. So that should be kind of fun. So that's, that's all I have there. So if there's any questions.
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you, Kirby. Superintendent Drake?
All right, good evening. Several things on the docket in my report. First is just an update for the community on strategic planning. We are, first of all, thank you for those people that participated in the surveys. We should have the MDE results hopefully in time for my presentation on the twentieth, otherwise I'm going to have to tweak that a little bit. But we know we will have it by the twenty-second for sure. And then by the end of that week, if all goes according to plan, the survey results will have been shared with all the staff internally, at least in the district at that point. That brings us to the working committees, that will really kick off their work in February. So we'll have a facilities committee, a profile of a graduate committee, a curriculum committee, which we will also be working with the present curriculum committee that's in place. And then student climate and culture and staff climate and culture. And so I will extend an invitation to the community. If there are people out there that would like to be part of any of these committees during the strategic planning, please reach out to me and we will get you on, on one of those committees. We're currently working with the county on a different approach to attendance. It's through CARRY, which is kind of an extension of the University of Minnesota. They have a program that's research-based, that it's a three-year commitment with our county schools. And then we're also looking into an additional program called Check and Connect, which we would potentially target with our, kind of our sixth through ninth graders. But that has a component of some home visitations and those other types of things. The main goals of it are to take the positive student assets that the child has and the family has and work with those instead of approaching it from a negative type of approach. And then just really fostering those relationships and making sure that we're staying connected with that child and supporting his or her needs through the, through the process of the program. I will miss the January board meeting. I will be in Grand Rapids that week with the blending leadership training. Really excited about that, and really looking forward to getting to know the cohort of other Fergus Falls residents and leaders. It'll be an excellent opportunity for me to make a lot of connections and not only talk about the future of the district, but what's going on in the community as well. And then I do need to thank Chairman Lemke. Probably about two months ago, he, he put a bug in my ear. He said, have you considered running for a seat on the Minnesota Rural Education Association? And had he not mentioned that, it probably, I don't know if it would have necessarily crossed my mind with all the other transitions in life taking place this year. But I did think about it and I threw my hat into the ring, and lo and behold, I have a seat on the Board of Directors. It's a three-year term, and I will have a mentor, he's the superintendent up in Bemidji. And I have met him before, and my first meeting will be on February fourth. But really looking forward to my own personal and professional growth as part of that, um, that organization, but also the opportunity to speak to the needs of rural education and in particular, Fergus Falls and our other schools, districts in this area. So I'm really excited about that. I want to congratulate the thirty-three students that are going to be inducted into NHS this evening. It's a great honor and I can be very proud of those students. And also a thanks, the committee people that serve on that have often a very difficult job, you know, going through and making determinations on that, so I would like to thank them for their work as well. And then, lastly, just thanking the community for its support of the Five Forty Four Education Foundation and our Dollars for Scholars program. Both have been the recipients of great community support that goes towards the support of our students, so very appreciative of that.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake?
Just on the strategic planning, the steering committees. You're planning on those starting, just for the public wise, in February, is that what you're kind of thinking about?
Correct, February and March.
Just for the general public, if they contact you to know kind of what timeline you're thinking and things like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Superintendent Drake. Okay, general consent items, we have the methods for the December ninth, two thousand nineteen school board meeting. Bills and treasuries report, Kirby Anderson.
Yes, Steve, I met with Blake for the first time prior to this meeting. And our, our fund balance right now is sitting at about eight million dollars, it's down about two million from, from last month. We had some, some money that went out for the Lincoln Center, there's also some twenty seventeen A bonds that, so there's a couple of million dollars there. We went through all of the, all of the expenses, and we had a couple of questions. And I think that Blake did a nice job, he actually went through and highlighted a number of these ahead of time for us. He did make the final purchase of the eight acres of land at Lincoln Center. And so that was one of the line items. We also had adjustments for child coaches and what else did we look at? Looked at curtains for the, it was thirty-four thousand dollars of curtains for the.
Auditorium.
For our auditorium here at Kennedy. And so I think for Blake's first time doing this, he did a nice job. And I noticed, I noticed in our packet that all the, all the information was out there too, so. We tried to look at that a little bit ahead of time, but then when we get, when we meet, next time we're going to have him dig into the files a little bit more. But anyway, everything appears to be in order.
Thank you, Kirby. Personnel, Elaine Jenkey.
We have a few changes that I would recommend for approval by the school board. That'd be a head coach hire, Sabrina Noon, head girls volleyball. Support staff hires, Heidi Brown, Special Ed Para Substitute here at KSS. Jessica Hexum, a Para educator at ALC. And then Lori Jensen, LTN, here at Kennedy Secondary School. And certified staff hires, we have three of them, they're all at the IQ Academy. Tao Drusel, Michelle Holcus, and Diane Anderson, all part-time for second semester. And then last, we have the two thousand eighteen, twenty-one agreement between the board and the Fergus Falls Principal Association. So I would recommend all those for approval.
Thank you, Elaine. Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items as presented?
To move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
On any discussion? All those in favor of the general consent items, say aye.
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 Opposed? General consent items pass. We have no old, old, we have no old business. Moving on to new business, we have a tentative FY twenty twenty seniority list for Independent School District Five Forty Four for the Fergus Falls Public Schools. There is no action on this, this is a first reading. And then we have a resolution, this is from the MSBA, for a resolution on the local school board control. We did this resolution, whereas the locally elected school boards are positioned best to represent their students, staff, parents, and community members, and address local needs and challenges. And whereas each school district faces unique needs which depend on a variety of factors, including demographics, geography, and district size. And whereas, just like legislative leaders, locally elected school boards are held accountable through the Minnesota election process. And whereas school board policies at the local level are enacted only after a comprehensive legal and open process. And whereas, under Minnesota Open Meeting Law, school board business generally occurs in meetings that are scheduled, publicized, and accessible to members of the public. And whereas preservation of local control in Minnesota has yielded statewide benefits such as Minnesota's scoring higher on average than the, on the national peers on the ACT, College entrance exam, in two thousand nineteen. And whereas one-size-fits-all mandates stifle innovation and creativity and consume staff time and resources. And whereas more than thirty bills to restrict local decision-making were introduced in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty biennium thus far. And whereas excellence in student achievement for all Minnesota students guides the work of school board, now therefore be resolved by the school board of Independent School District Five Forty Four, Fergus Falls Public Schools support local decision-making authority and opposes legislation that restricts the ability for locally elected school boards to respond to the needs of their districts, students, and communities. Does anyone have for that resolution and move for its adoption?
I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
And do we have a second?
A second.
And then discussion. Just some background on this, this came from the, when I was down at Delica Assembly, they were asking for all school boards across the state of Minnesota to pass this resolution on behalf of school boards, and to, that they could present that to the legislators down in, down in our state capital.
And last year, there was thirty bills that were introduced to reduce local control, you know, to kind of standardize curriculum and discipline policies across the state. And I think this is kind of a strategic move, a good one. Although, yes, but it's just, I think that's why.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lenkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Following this meeting, we will go into a work session to talk about MSBA arrangements, negotiations, Lincoln School, district practices, and strategic planning. So we have a full work session. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, January twenty-seventh, at five fifteen, right here at the Outer Community Room here at Kennedy Secondary School. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Ma'am, I've been asked to take a picture of the school board members.